You know, the the reality it is, um, back in twenty twenty two, I only won by seventeen votes.
Oh, no way? Seventeen votes?
Like, yeah, yeah, ten votes, I think, in seventy twenty two and seventeen votes in twenty four, if you can believe it.
No way, that blows my mind. That tells you that every vote matters.
It sure does. And that's why it's so important to to get to know what your candidates stand for and what is it that they're trying to accomplish.
Hey there, this is Krista Moon, I'm the Director of Michigan Women, and I'm here this afternoon with Rich Spitzer. He's one of our Saginaw County Commissioners, and I'm very excited to talk to him today and find out more about his representation for us in the county, how he decided to become a Commissioner, and then what is a County Commissioner, because I'm sure most of us probably don't even know. And then what are some of the uh things on the agenda for twenty twenty five? So I'm just gonna dive right in, Rich, so let's get started. So tell us a little bit about yourself.
Well, thanks for having me, Krista, and it's kind of fun to um do this, um the another way to connect with our community, and I appreciate it. Um, so um, I am um resident of Saginaw Township now for twenty three years. I actually grew up on the East Coast, um New York, New Jersey area, worked in that area for many years. Uh, what uh the automotive industry is what brought me to uh Michigan uh in the early nineties uh in the Detroit area originally. And then I moved up here to um Saginaw Saginaw Township back in two thousand and three. Uh, since coming to town, um I came to town because I bought, I don't know if you remember, the old Powerhouse Gym on Bay Road.
No, I don't remember that one.
Yeah.
No, no, I don't know that one.
Yeah, it was uh right next to where Cam Rock Tire is now, um in that plaza. And then it moved over to the Green Acres Plaza. Um, so that was um my second passion other than the automotive industry. And so I came to town for that in two thousand and three and and got engaged with the community, um with the Chamber of Commerce, with the Saginaw Township Business Association, and started participating in in helping out in the community. So um started to get engaged with some of the issues, talked to our representatives at the township level, the county level, uh going back that far. Um, but I didn't really um decide to get into uh politics until, believe it or not, twenty eighteen. And the reason I did is because, you know, I I took a look at my tax bill.
Oh, okay.
And I noticed, you know, it kept going up and up and up. It didn't matter, you know, uh uh what the economy was doing, my bill was going up. So I started doing a little digging. And um I looked at the county budget, and the county budget was a hundred and twenty eight million back in twenty twelve. Um, by the time I decided to run, it was double. Uh, today it is sitting at two hundred and seventy five million dollars. So from a hundred and twenty eight to two hundred and seventy five since twenty twelve, that's what arguably twelve years, thirteen years. If you do the math, that's almost ten percent a year. Now, I know my social security didn't go up by ten percent per year. I know a lot of our residents are on fixed incomes. And I thought, wait a minute, there's gotta be some way that we can maybe moderate this into the future. So I decided to to run for County Commissioner, see if I could dig into it. Um, and and that's what prompted uh, that's what prompted me to to seek office.
I thought, that's so cool. What um, so this was in twenty eighteen, so that was your first year?
No.
No?
I I I ran, but I did not win in eighteen.
Oh, okay, okay.
In fact, um, I I I'm sorry, I ran in twenty, that was in twenty is when I ran. Um, because of, you remember this, the Citizens Not Politicians Initiative, there was redistricting done right after the twenty twenty election. And uh the district I had ran in in twenty twenty encompassed quite a bit of Saginaw City and quite a bit of James and Spalding Townships, as well as a couple of precincts in Saginaw Township, including mine. Uh, but uh I lost to an incumbent, um Snap Matthews, who I'm very happy to serve with to these days. Um, so in twenty twenty two, with the redistricting, uh, it was interesting, my district, District Three, uh is now basically the west side of Saginaw Township. If you take, if you drew a line up from north, south on Center Road, and you went pretty much anything north of Grashen, anything west of Center Road, everything south of Tidabowase, all the way to Midland Road, that is basically what my uh district is. And because that district skews far more conservative, um, I was able to win the election. But, you know, the the reality it is, um, back in twenty twenty two, I only won by seventeen votes.
Oh, no way? Seventeen votes?
Like, yeah, yeah, ten votes, I think, in seventy twenty two and seventeen votes in twenty four, if you can believe it.
No way, that blows my mind. That tells you that every vote matters.
It sure does.
Okay.
And that's why it's so important to to get to know what your candidates stand for and what is it that they're trying to accomplish.
Well, before we get into what you're trying to accomplish, I understand a portion of it's the budget, which is what your main driver. Um, can you tell us a little bit more about what a County Commissioner does? And what, tell us more about that.
I'd be happy to. So, interestingly, if you think about it, uh, the County Commissioners um have authority over uh the clerk, elections and record-keeping, the courts, the sheriff, and a number of other departments. And our role is basically to act as um overseers, if you will. Most, a lot of these are elected positions of their own right, they're uh, they have statutory mandates, um, both leave uh both state and federal on what they have to do. And so they, there's some things that, you know, they gotta be funded, but nevertheless, we are the ones that monitor if they're um doing it effectively, if there's, you know, other ways that they can do it, we can suggest, and we have the power to authorize or not authorize um specific expenditures within their budgets. So our primary role is to act as kind of like the fiduciaries for the constituents and keeping an oversight role over all of the county functions. Um, and then in some ways, uh, it is to hopefully try to set direction for uh overall where the county is going. Um, but I was surprised to find out when I was elected, Krista, quite honestly, how limited our our ability to control those budgets is.
Really?
Yeah. I happen to have an MBA from Northwood University, in fact. So I think I'm pretty good with numbers, and I've been in, you know, business all my life. I've worked in Fortune one hundreds, and I've run my own businesses, so I think I can understand numbers. But by and large, out of our whole budget, we maybe control one to two percent of it. The rest of it is mandated.
Mandated by?
The state or the feds. So for example, we have to maintain the sheriff's, the jail. Okay, the road patrol is a different story, that's that's their business, but the jails, we have to, and we have to continue to fund it. Courts, we have to fund that. Prosecutor's Office, we have to fund that. The uh indigent defense folks, the those would be the uh public defenders, we have to fund that. Um, we have no discretion, the Health Department, the Mental Health Authority, uh, on and on and on. These things that are in the law, state law says, you gotta pay them this much as a minimum. You can pay them more if you like, but you can't pay them any less. So when when it came down to it, and I don't, did a deep dive into our budget back in twenty twenty two, before we approved the twenty three budget. And I was looking to maybe help, we, at the time, we were facing a a a crisis uh with our backlog of cases within the court system, and that was primarily due to
Oh, yeah, I remember that.
Yes, some, there was a a couple of issues, one was a transition to a new uh um software system. Uh, but in addition to that, there was, uh, we were facing a shortage of prosecutors. They were leaving because they were being compensated forty to fifty percent more by the funding in the public defenders line item that the state approved, uh compared to what we could afford within the county. So I was trying to find a way to transition some funds over. And um, in the end, after looking at the entire budget, two hundred and sixty some odd million dollars, of which about, uh, I believe at the time it was somewhere in the magnitude of eighty million is what we have discretionary authority over. Out of an eighty million dollar ballpark budget, I succeeded in reallocating one hundred thousand dollars. And and the way that I was able to do that, the only way I was able to do that was by changing the replacement cycle in our computers uh at the county from a five-year replacement cycle to a six-year replacement cycle. That was the only flexibility we had, if you can believe it. I could not find a way to shift uh funds around. So uh, it it's quite frustrating in a way, quite frustrating.
Okay. Well, I, let me ask you, how does the budget affect, because you know, us in the county, we don't always know these things. The county budget, how does that, what are we paying in our taxes? Where does that come from in our taxes that we're paying? Our property tax?
Correct, correct. So if you look at your property tax bill that you hopefully will be scheduling for payment here before February fifteen, you'll find that you have your local taxes and Saginaw Township taxes, your school, your school tax. And then you'll see a whole laundry list of other items. And those are, the county operating budget um would be somewhere in the magnitude of about the total for county services is about twenty some odd mils in your property tax bill. About ten of those are strictly operating funds, that's what pays for uh essentially your county administration, your um courts, your jail, uh, and those required services that that the county is responsible for. But over the years, you go back to Proposal A, and you recall that there was a um, that was to fund the schools, but there was a thing there about, well, you can't increase taxes more than a maximum of five percent or whatever the um actual rise in values is, if it's less than five percent. That that was the headly amendment cap on how much taxes can grow, which is all well and good, except you may recall, we had a mortgage crisis and values of homes took a dive back in oh eight, oh nine, ten. And if you did um current dollar analysis on the tax revenue that been, you know, there was no limit on how much they could lower the taxes as the SEBs went down, but there is that five percent to go up. So right now, we're barely beginning to get back to the the what the revenues were back in oh eight or nine, believe it or not. So how did they get around that? Special millages. So if you look at your list, you'll see that about the next ten or so mills are the additional millages that were passed by voters. That include your sheriff's millage, your animal control, your mosquito abatement, uh, your castle museum. Um, you can go down the list, the zoo, uh, all of these, the Dow Event Center, all of these were tacked on in addition to that in order to keep uh keep those funded. So, bottom line, uh, when you look at your tax bill, it it's based on your property value and but that only is allowed to go up so much, that's your state equalized value, that's only allowed to go so much. If you look at your actual market value, obviously, that has gone much, much higher over the last few years.
Okay, okay, that makes sense.
Yeah.
What, why do you, why did the budget go so much from twenty twelve? Why did it double?
Because of the millage.
Those ten years?
Yeah, the millages.
The millages, okay. Voters voted for it.
And voters voted for it.
Voters wanted more services.
Well, there's that, but then there's always that, you know, the way it's presented, right? First of all, if they do have any kind of promotional campaign, they'll say, "Oh, it'll only be fifty cents a day." And who's gonna say, "Well, you know, for fifty cents a day, I don't have a problem with it." Um, the second thing is that if you look at the composition um of our housing, I think about forty-five percent is rental housing. So
In Saginaw County?
Huge, huge. And they don't pay tax bills, renters don't. So it's very easy to
Renters don't pay property tax, but the people who own the buildings still have to pay.
Correct, correct. But if you look at an apartment complex, let's say like uh, or by your neck of the woods, uh,
Camel.
Camel, right? How many units do they have in there?
A lot.
So there's a lot of units, a lot of voters versus one property owner who could be local but may not be. Right? And it could be corporations, corporations don't vote. Yes, so regardless, my point simply being that by, you know, weight of numbers, it um it's easy to see how some of these things can pass. And who can argue with, you know, do you want uh, um, you know, uh, uh, you know, a museum? It's good to have. Do you want a zoo for your kids?
Yeah.
Uh, do you want, do you want more sheriff uh road patrols? Who could argue with that? My point has never been that we don't need these things, right? The only thing I've been arguing against is, have we reached a point where it's getting beyond the means of our residents to pay for it? Um, most of the feedback that I've gotten in the last couple month and a half, well, essentially since December one, when the tax bills went out, is what the heck? My tax bill went up by this much. Some people have seen as much as, you know, the average has been running it around, you know, if you have a a home that is worth, um, let's say a hundred and fifty, uh, your a hundred and fifty K, uh, you're seeing it about with the two mills that were passed for the road tax and the slight increase in the Commission on Aging, that was a tenth. But when you add it all in, a hundred and fifty thousand dollar home is seeing an increase, well, that would be seventy five K. So somewhere between a hundred and fifty and two hundred bucks. It doesn't seem like much. But when you're already stressed with, energy bills went up, gas prices haven't really, you know, gotten that much cheaper. Um, food costs have been going through the roof, right? And you add that, how that's impacted your budget, now that two hundred dollars is beginning to make a big difference, particularly if you're on a fixed income. And so getting a lot of calls about, what happened? Well, you passed this millage, you know, it it passed, now now you gotta pay the consequences. So um, it it it's what's been adding and adding to the the tax bill over the years has been this, you know, little incremental millage that comes in, you know, "Oh, we want a castle museum," it's only an eight tenths of a mill. Then you add and uh, I think the the um the sheriffs uh went in for an increase from one point two five to one point seven five. Uh, the Health Department has a uh a millage. And it it just, one on top of the other and top of the other, and now all of a sudden you've got ten extra mills, which again, if you look at a hundred and fifty thousand dollar average value home, which is no longer the case in our area. Um, I think the the way that, let me back up. So, the assessed values going back to twenty two, when I really dove deep into them, where the average was about a hundred and fifty. Uh, with the way that my home prices have been going the the average home price in Saginaw Township
Was five hundred and fifty thousand?
One fifty.
Oh, okay.
Yes, one fifty.
Okay, so back in twenty twenty two, the average home value was one fifty.
Right, in that ballpark. I think it's much significantly higher in twenty two, I would have to go and then dig the data. Um, because, you know, the mark, it's been kept what it go, can go up, but you know, in Saginaw Township now, it's hard to find a home under two hundred thousand dollars, period, very difficult. Um, and uh, it it's the housing shortage and and whatever. Um, but be that as it may, for longstanding residents, right? The people that are on the fixed income, that, you know, extra ten mills now translates to ten mills on a uh a hundred and, let's call it a hundred and fifty thousand dollar valued home. To the math, fifteen hundred bucks. That's
Can we just take one little break? Can you explain mills just briefly?
Sure. Um, so your property taxes are based on what the assessed value of your property is. So, let's say that you bought your home, call it ten years ago, and you paid a hundred thousand dollars for it. That sets the baseline. Okay, so that's your assessed value, and every year that's allowed to go up no more than five percent.
Five percent, got it.
All right, so over ten years, it may have gone up by fifty percent. So now your assessed value is a hundred and fifty thousand. Okay, that's the baseline. So now, our property taxes are set, um, collected. They're collected based on mills, that means dollars per hundred thousand dollars worth of value, or per thousand dollars person worth of value, one mill. So if
Okay, one, let me, let me clarify. One thousand dollars of home value is one mill?
Back up. You pay, one mill is one dollar per thousand dollars of value.
Okay.
One mill is, the definition is, one dollar per one thousand dollars worth of value.
Okay.
So if you have a home that's worth, again, for ease of calculation, a hundred thousand, you're gonna pay, how many thousands are there in a hundred thousand, one hundred, right? So one hundred times one, that's a hundred dollars worth of property tax. Makes sense?
Yeah, it makes sense. Thanks for explaining that part.
Right. So obviously, there there's, you know, depending on what the value of your home is, that's how big your bill can get. Uh, Sag, I I would love to see a distribution of um what the home values are in Saginaw Township, but I would bet you that um, the mean is probab, mean meaning they're half far more and half far less, um, probably is sitting at around, right now, I would probably guess, probably one seventy five to two hundred would be
Yeah, I would think that.
Yeah.
We can always find out, we can do a little research and dig in for that.
Yeah, we can dig into it.
So when I have my tax bill and I have the county part, other millages like for the township, those are, those are all added in?
Correct.
It's not just the county, so you have your list, and because there's different townships in different cities in our county that have their own millages. So you have your county millage that pays for the services for health, the mental health, police, our jail, mosquito control, which I love, a zoo, you know, all those services that we want to make our county great. What what are you thinking about moving forward? I mean, I sense that you want to get more control of the budget. Where do, what are you thinking for twenty twenty five? Like, what are some of the things that you would wanna, that you're looking at or would wanna change?
Well, you know, the the one thing that has become very, very clear is that this community has huge needs. Um, you know, we don't have, um, I think, um, adequate services in mental health. Um, my, you know, I'm a uh card-carrying member of the NRA, uh, and I believe in Second Amendment rights, but I you, I I fail to see how you can be supportive of gun rights if you're uh not supportive of um giving people the mental health um support that they need, because in my humble opinion, a lot of crime and a lot of uh you know, what you call mass events, you know, if you really get down to the bottom of it, there's something seriously happening there that needs to be taken care of. Uh, so I think that's an area that would need support. Uh, we look at our Health Department and the services that they provide, immunizations and inspections, you know, the Health Department are the ones that go out and make sure that when you go to a restaurant, it is safe for you to have, to to have your food, right? Uh, and so you'd think that we'd wanna make sure that they're adequately covered. Um, everybody worries about crime in the county. And um, we know the city is probably could use some more uh help, but the bottom line is that the uh outlying communities in particular, the ones that have less density of residents and therefore less revenues from property taxes, need a little more help. The Sheriff's Road Patrol is a is a huge uh area where we probably should have more. I think justice is not justice if it is not prompt and fair. So would it make sense for us to make sure that our courts are adequately funded so they can have the right tools and the right number of uh support staff to make sure the paperwork flows and that the things happen on a timely basis? Does it make sense that we should have enough prosecutors to make sure that the the people that are um committing crimes are promptly and swiftly brought through the the justice system? There's huge needs in the county. I go back to the point, we have needs, but we don't have money. Where are we gonna get the money? Well, we could go back to our residents and say, hey, uh, we need to raise your taxes some more. And I don't know that there's much appetite for that at this point in time. How much further can we go with that? So I've I've been focused on trying to find a different way. And in my mind, the only way that we can do it is to grow the tax base. How does that happen? We have more houses and businesses, right, that are paying property taxes. Well, how do we get more houses and more businesses? Well, we gotta, A, encourage building, because in my humble opinion, with the housing shortage that we have, even if we don't have the jobs here in Saginaw, if we have affordable housing or attainable housing, workforce housing, as they call it, people who will commute to Bay City, people will commute to Flint. So if we build it, they will come, to coin an old phrase, right? So I'm, would like to focus energy on figuring out ways that we can encourage more housing construction, more development within the area. But consistent with that, I would also wanna make sure that we find ways to um find more peo, have more people be able to afford the housing within the county. And that goes to employment, good-paying jobs, and so that then leads me to economic development. So to answer your question, the the areas where I'm I'm hoping to focus my energy uh over this next term is gonna be on on housing and on economic development. And that hopefully will grow the tax base, which will pay for increasing the services that we can deliver.
Okay, okay. So just to recap a little bit, you you feel that the level of services that Saginaw currently has isn't necessarily sufficient for our needs? Does that, does that part true? Like, you don't think that, oh, we have everything set up, we don't need anything more?
Correct.
Okay, so you feel like there there's room for growth in terms of our services, and you don't wanna put more taxes on people that live here, you just want more people to come and do business here? To help with our tax revenues?
Right. You know, bottom line is, you know, and and I'm a small government kind of guy, but there's certain, certain roles of government that I think are essential. And as I said, things like um, uh, for example, uh, you know, the justice system, things like uh the the clerk and the voting, uh, things like uh uh services that there are on, there are the, that private enterprise probably would not be as effective in delivering, mosquito abatement, right? Roads, um, and uh on and on and on, there are things, there is a role for government. And that that, they should be delivering that as effectively and efficiently as possible. But one thing I've discovered in two years on in in the county is, and I've met with, you know, I literally went and visited every single department uh when I got elected, met the employees, met the leaders. I truly believe they're committed to doing the best job they can do for the county. There there's a tremendous amount of um motivation and pride, believe it or not, from what I've observed. So, they they all are, have great intentions, and they're very frustrated that they don't have enough resources to deliver what is the apparent needs within the community. Um, and and I feel their frustration. Uh, but by the same token, as I said, the the answer to that isn't, let's raise taxes. I think the the answer to that is, let's grow the tax base.
Yeah, let's find other ways to get money. What about like grants or things like that? Is that an option?
Oh, heck, yeah, and we um, uh, we encourage all the departments to be very aggressively in finding them, and I'll be, I'll be very happy to tell you that And I'll be, I'll be very happy to tell you that we've had some successes, um, not only grants, but, but creative ways of, of funding. So for example, you know, going back to the last term, uh, twenty-two through twenty-four, um, I'm sure you were aware, we hosted a very major event, the, uh, Memorial Cup, the Saginaw Spirit.
Yeah, woo-hoo!
Woo-hoo! Well, um, in order to host that, we had to make some, uh, major improvements to the Dow Event Center, right? But guess what? We found it, we found a way, and it's, uh, a shade over ten million, I think, probably closer to about thirteen, that we had to invest in the Dow Event Center. We didn't raise taxes. We found creative ways to fund it, including getting grants from the state, uh, uh, grants from private enterprise, Dow, marvelous, marvelous company that got right behind it. Um, finding ways to, for example, uh, amortize the investment over the years, uh, by having revenue, uh, returned to the county. So there is no actual incremental cost to the taxpayer, uh, for doing that. So that was, again, a combination of many different factors, but we got very creative upon making that happen. Mosquito Abatement is building a brand-new facility. They hope to occupy it in the spring. Um, and that's gonna be about an eleven-million-dollar project.
Okay.
Guess what? Guess what? We were able to help them figure out how to use their existing millage and their, their rainy day fund to actually pay for that building cash, without having to bond, without having to increase the cost of it through interest payments over ten, twenty years. And that's a huge savings in terms of dollar amount that can be used for other purposes.
Yeah. Well, when you say "we," does that mean that you, your county, the county commissioners were strategizing these ideas and bringing them to the departments or like a joint effort? Like everybody at the, in leadership at the county, or is there like certain people that are pushing for, or like helping? I'm trying to say, what is the, what role was the county commissioner, commissioners in helping develop those strategies?
The, yeah, I think to answer your question, two elements, right? Clearly, um, for most of the departments, the easy out is, well, let, let's just go out and get a bond and, you know, we'll just pay the interest over the years, but that increases the overall cost. We challenged them to think more creatively about, you know, can we find a different way to finance it without having to incur the, the interest cost? Uh, when I say "we," uh, the Budget Nodded Committee in particular, uh, the County Services Committee in particular, there was sort of a broad consensus within the commissioners that we wanted to find ways to moderate or mitigate the costs of doing business in the county. And, uh, if you go back and look at our voting record for the, for the, uh, um, for the last term, you'll find that a huge majority of our votes were unanimous. Uh, that those where there were any, uh, conflicts, I think at worst, we were seven to four. Um, and most of the time, it was greater than that, uh, obviously. So there is a broad consensus within the commissioners that we need to find creative ways to maximize what we deliver back to our constituents without increasing costs of it.
Can community members join these committees if they have ideas or want, you know, to get involved in helping find resources or streamline operations and processes, whatever it is? How, can community members be on these committees?
Okay, so relative to the county committees, the county commissioner meetings, uh, committees, um, the way that constituents can engage is the agendas are published the week before. Uh, all of the committees are pretty regular. They are on a certain day of the week and a certain part of, certain part of the month. So you can kind of keep, uh, an idea of when they're gonna occur. Then if you look for the agenda, if there's an issue or a thing where, um, you have an opinion or a suggestion, there is what is called a public comment period at each of these committee meetings where the public can come in and say, hey, I'd like to share this, or I have this issue, or I have this problem. They can use that as a, a charity to, to engage with the commissioners on whatever issue they, that's top of mind. But the other way that they can get engaged is, and I forget at last count how many different agencies, uh, the, um, the county, uh, works, I can, I have it here, I think it's on the magnitude of, well, certainly over thirty. And, uh, members of the public can, and there's actually an application form online at our county website, where they can, uh, volunteer to serve on the committees for these agencies. And that includes things like Health Source Saginaw, um, the Community Mental Health, um, and on that, the museum, the zoo, on and down the list, uh, even the road commission, that you can volunteer to become a member of the board or a member of the, yeah, member of the board, uh, of those organizations. So if you have a passion for something, um, I would encourage anyone, uh, that's interested to go to the county website and go down the list of all of those, uh, agencies, uh, and see if there's any particular ones that, that overlap with their interests and apply to be on it. And they can engage in actually driving the direction of those agencies.
I love that so much. I know people in Saginaw really wanna help, but a lot of times, we don't know what to do. But knowing that there's committees out there, you could get on the mental health committee, um, if you're passionate about that. The zoo, like I have my own thoughts about the zoo that I would love to see a few changes there. Um, yeah, I think that's really cool that people have an opportunity. I'll make sure to include a link and information, uh, on this podcast where people can access that.
Awesome, awesome. And, and you don't necessarily even have to, you know, if you, if you don't feel like making commitment to, you know, okay, being on a board, having to meet, you know, once a month and, and all that. Uh, every one of these folks has, um, um, a website where they have a list of their board members. So like you were mentioning, if you have thoughts, ideas, suggestions, guess what? Reach out.
Okay, I will.
And let them know, hey, I've been thinking about this. Have you guys thought of, you know, could you do this? And that way you can, um, provide them some input, number one, and get some feedback on, yeah, we considered it, here's the, here's the issue, here's the problem. Here's why we couldn't implement it, or here's why, you know, it's gonna take us some time to do it. They can explain where they're at with it.
Can I ask you, uh, do you get many, eh, do you get much engagement in that way from our community? Or is it pretty silent?
You know, I really, you know, there, it, it's a fascinating thing to me. You, you've heard of the eighty-twenty rule, right?
Yeah.
Yeah. I, I think that I actually, when it comes to engaging with, uh, uh, local government, uh, it's probably like a, an, uh, ninety-five-five rule. Um, very few people tend to engage, and I don't know why.
I know why, because we don't know anything.
Okay.
Which is what we're gonna solve here on this podcast.
That we, that would be very worthwhile, and, and I hope that you do get a lot of, uh, people engaging with that. Uh, my thought is simply that, hey, you know, um, at the end of the day, you can sit at home, read the paper, and say, well, what a mess that is. Um, or you can say, hey, I wonder if they've thought about doing this to fix that, and make a call. Um, you know, in, eh, the best ideas aren't, you know, no, most of us aren't, uh, geniuses. Um, the best ideas come from people chatting with one another and, and, you know, brainstorming, how do we fix that?
Are the commissioners resp-, or, not just commissioners, but if we put our ideas out there or come to one of the meetings or volunteer to be on a committee, are, are the elected officials responsive? Like if I send an email or something, hey, about the zoo, for example. I would love to see more healthy food options when I take my granddaughter to the zoo versus candy and junk. Um, I would really love to see a change in the, in the food and the offerings that they provide our, our little kids. I mean, we don't wanna be giving them all that, all the time. Uh, would I get a response, or would it just go into a black hole?
Each one of the commissioners, um, has their personal email on their website. As to how responsive they are, I don't know. I know that for my, in my case, if anybody were to call me or if anybody were to email me, uh, I will always answer a phone call and I will always respond to an email, even if it is just to acknowledge I got it. But you will know that there's a live person that actually, uh, you know, saw your email. Um, and then I will, you know, get into whatever the suggestion or, or issue is and try to get back to people.
Well, I wanna circle back to, for a minute, on your mission for getting more people to come to Saginaw, live in Saginaw and work in Saginaw and build their businesses in Saginaw. Um, what are, do you have any ideas or thoughts that you're gonna pursue? Like, are there any actions that our community members can take to try to help in those initiatives? Because I am all about that. I would love, I love Saginaw. I want Saginaw to be a place where people want to come. We have so many awesome things to do here. It's really a good town, but people say negative things about Saginaw, which is not true. So what, what are your, any thoughts or plans, or how can we get involved, or what are you, anything you're thinking about?
You know, it's funny you bring that up. Um, I think one of the interesting, um, uh, things that happened with that Memorial Cup is I think it started the process of people in the area starting to think differently about Saginaw. You know, that yes, we can, kind of an attitude is beginning to permeate, which I think is well overdue. Um, the, um, there's a, like you say, there's a lot of good going on. Um, and we need to, you know, take it upon ourselves to make sure that when we talk to each other, we focus and highlight the positive, even as we talk about the negatives and how, what we can do to, to fix, you know, the stuff that isn't going right. Um, the perception, and the other thing I wanted to comment on, it, it's fascinating to me that how many of our county organizations and county departments are so focused on trying to affect that? So if you take the Saginaw County Convention and Visitors Bureau, their messaging, how they're promoting the area, the Great Lakes Bay Convention and Visitors Bureau, how they're, they're working very hard to highlight all the wonderful things we've got going here. Uh, the Parks and Recreation Department and the events that they're hosting, right? Um, and, and wonderful things that they're doing. Um, there's a lot of positive that's going on. Now, um, if we are able to make that change, and I think that will help, it's, you know, it's never one thing or another that's going to drive attractiveness, attractiveness of an area. But that's certainly one element. We have great, we have great higher education here, right? We've got ESU, we've got Delta.
Yeah, we do.
Right? So for employers, having access to higher education institutions is a big deal. Um, we have, um, a, a really highly effective economic development organization in Saginaw Future. They've done amazing, amazing work in, you know, keeping employers here and in attracting employers. The, you know, we are somewhat limited by, do we have the right logistics infrastructure? Or do we have the right locations for some of the things that are, are, you know, going? But if you think about it, we have another transformational project in the works that's going to significantly, and I say "transformational" because it truly will transform our area, the Medical Diamond. Have you heard of that?
Yeah, tell us about that, Rich.
So that's gonna be an upwards of a three-hundred-million-dollar project that's gonna create a, a campus, if you will, right along Washington Avenue, uh, that's going to include, uh, the CMU's, uh, School of Medicine. Uh, it's going to include the Saginaw County Health Department. It's going to, it's gonna consolidate a lot of the resources and, um, of our town and create actually a walkable, livable space. It will have a hotel, it'll have retail, it'll have, uh, you know, uh, restaurants as well, uh, you know, food. Um, but the most important thing that it's going to accomplish is, is gonna cement Saginaw's position as the medical hub for anything north of I-69, basically. That will be the medical hub. And right now, we are the hub for the thumb, and there's quite a, you know, pretty much anything north of us comes down, but this will cement that position. So what does that do? It's gonna generate huge unemployment opportunities, not just for the doctors that were hopeful that will remain here and create their practices, but think about all of the support services. Um, so, you know, every once in a while, my doctor sends me and has, you know, do some of these tests. So I went in for, uh, two tests the, the other day. Um, I went in for a pulmonary function test. That's where the one that puts you in this little chamber and you gotta blow hard into the tube and so. Well, it's not a doctor that's doing that test, it's a tech. And guess what? That's a Delta program that you can go to, right? Don't have to be a registered nurse, but you can go through and you can learn to operate this equipment. It's highly technical. These are very sophisticated machines, but there is training available. I went in for an echocardiogram. So who did that? Another technician, highly trained, but again, not a degreed professional like a nurse or, um, or a doctor. And all of the support functions that go into the healthcare system, those are generally very highly-paid professions. And there is significant assistance for retraining, if you were to think about doing that. Michigan Works, the amount of money that's available from the state and federal levels to get the training, to get the education, you wouldn't believe. It's available. All you have to do is reach out and go for it. So my, uh, my thought simply is that as I look forward to, um, what is it that's going to help us? And that'll plant the seed. Because if you have a vibrant healthcare system, you have vibrant education system, guess what? Employers are gonna wanna be around that, right?
Yeah, absolutely. Are you, so that, that Medical Diamond, uh, is, there's a downtown business association, I think, in Saginaw? When I talk to my colleagues, peers in the community, one of the things I hear all the time about what they don't like about Saginaw, what kinda went to the wayside, is our downtown. Um, how back in the day, it had Jacobson's, and it was great, you could walk around, there was all these stores and shops. And, um, if we had a better downtown, like most cities have a cool little shop, little downtown, right? Is, I, how's the Medical Diamond and that association, are there any, what are your thoughts about that?
Yeah, you know, then again, um, I think, you know, Saginaw is a victim of, of, you know, years of suburbanization, and that was a trend that was very prevalent, uh, as we went into the last half of last century and, and, and early in this first century, in this century. Um, the urban living phenomenon, uh, the attractiveness of that, um, has, um, really taken off in some hubs, but it's not universal across the country. So how do we get on that bandwagon? Um, so the, you know, the one thing about that downtown thing is, you get into that whole chicken or the egg situation, which says, okay, so more businesses would open if they felt there were enough people to support them, right? And the people that would consider moving downtown would say, well, I would move downtown if there were more businesses. Right? So you get stuck into that chicken or the egg thing. I always maintain that, um, people vote with not only their, their feet, but with their wallets. So if, what do you wanna see more of, go and support it. So if you wanna see more downtown businesses, go and help support the ones that are there. Because if those businesses thrive, then guess what? People are gonna be attracted to living downtown. We got the Bankrupt and the Yeti that were redone. They're at a hundred percent occupancy.
Oh, really? That's awesome.
Yeah, yeah. Um, Old Town, I mean, they're developing, their development co-op and condo kind of a housing there, like you wouldn't believe. Why? That's a vibrant street, Hamilton Street, right? That's a, you know, entertainment and a little shopping, but it's attracting people. Um, the, on my humble opinion, um, the other thing that would help make it more attractive would be if we had a, um, a more robust for lack of a would be if we had a more robust, for lack of a better word, public transportation system. Because if you're going to be downtown, you don't want to be moving your car because parking will become at a premium. So you do want to find an alternate way of moving. Right now, the city of Saginaw funds the Stars system. But I would think that if perhaps they got additional funding, whether that be state level funding or even if there was some sort of a consensus from the local communities to help subsidize it, that you could see additional routes and more people venturing downtown if they didn't have to worry about parking and could get around easily. One of the projects that I think could potentially come to pass, and a lot of it depends on whether or not they're able to obtain sufficient funding, the Stars system was considering, they're outgrowing their current hub downtown. And so they were, they did a study, you know, there last year to try to figure out, well, if we did move, where could we go? And one of the ideas that was very popular was, how about we resurrect the Potter Street Station and make it into the new bus transportation hub and create retail? There's property around that area that could be resurrected as well into affordable and attainable housing and also for, you know, and great services. So if you make that the hub, and let's say, wait, how about we put in a grocery store? And how about we put in a dry cleaner? And how about pharmacy? And how about daycare? So people could come in, drop their kids off at daycare, take the connecting bus to their employer and then reverse that. The biggest barriers right now to employment for the underemployed or unemployed, childcare, transportation. And so if we found a way to maybe, you know, fund that kind of a development, I think it would also create an attractive hub for housing that's within the corridor, it's along, you know, up and down Washington Street that goes to the Medical Diamond and downtown and Old Town.
That sounds so awesome. Are there any other things that you'd like to share with us, Rich, before we wrap this interview up?
One other thing that I want to touch on is there was also a great deal of controversy going back to twenty-three over our decision to replace our controller. That brought forth quite a bit of discussion within the community. I am very happy that our commissioners decided to try to move in a different direction. As I maintained at the time, I had never met a more knowledgeable person than Mr. Bellman, the controller at the time. But unfortunately, his management style was very abrupt, for lack of a better word. And people felt that he was creating a toxic work environment. And in the end, it's not only about what you know, but it's, if you're the person in charge, it's about leadership and it's about management. And if you're not able to motivate your workforce, and we have five hundred plus employees, I think we needed a change. We took some time to find the right candidate. But we did in the end succeed in attracting the administrator from Alpena County, Mary Catherine Hannah.
Man, I saw that at the State of the Town, County presentation.
Yeah, and she joined us in in January. And I got to tell you, January of twenty-four, I got to tell you, she's been a fresh, a breath of fresh air. Again, very knowledgeable, which is great. But more importantly, I think she gets very, very high marks for people skills. So I just wanted to comment that I think that's another one of the turns for the better that we were able to accomplish at the county over the last couple of years.
That is great. Now, if there's anything else you want to talk to us about, Rich, as you move forward in twenty twenty-four, you want to share some details, please get ahold of me, we can have you back on. I really appreciate your time today. I've learned so much and I'm looking forward to continuing our conversations and learning more from other elected officials in our local communities.
That'll be wonderful, and I'll be watching for them.
Thanks, have a good day.
Thanks, Krista, bye.
Bye.